And they're pretty reasonably priced, too.
I'll be good with this.
Yeah, they really are.
Actually, they do more, too.
Yeah. I used to be total Apple person.
That's the part that Apple can't get, you know.
I was all Apple girl here until I used the Surface Pro and then I switched camps.
Okay.
The City of Riverbank Special City Council Meeting is now convened. Today is Monday, October 12th, 2015. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Thank you, Heavenly Father Jesus, for this day that you've provided for us, the day, Heavenly Father Jesus, that we give you praise and worship. We come to you tonight, Heavenly Father, and we just ask that you be with the elected officials that the City of Riverbank has elected to conduct their business. Heavenly Father, give them wisdom, give them understanding as they go through the things that they have to. We know, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you are the Great One. You are the one, Heavenly Father Jesus, that we seek when we need the wisdom, the courage, and the understanding. And tonight, I just ask that you be with each elected official, each staff member, each citizen in the City of Riverbank, and just ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, that they all come together in one accord and make the proper decisions that's best for this city and your will. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Captain. Have a great evening. Enjoy. Thank you, sir. Don't spend all my money on one spot. Too late.
It's already gone.
Conflict of interest. Any council member and staff who would have a direct conflict--
Excuse me, Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's go to roll call.
Councilmember Janine Tucker--
Here.
Councilmember Leanne Jones Cruz--
Here.
Councilmember Cal Campbell--
Here.
Vice Mayor Darlene Barbara Martinez--
Here.
Mayor Richard D. O'Brien--
Here.
Any conflict of interest? I don't think so. This is not a decision-making. Public business, our public has just left the building. So we're going to proceed to item 2.1, presentation of the city financial forecast.
Mayor, members of the City Council, this evening, we have scheduled a special meeting to take a closer look at the budget, not only in terms of this year, but what does it look like five years into the future. Maricela Garcia, our Director of Finance, has put together a written report that was provided to you and the public last week and has provided a summary of this, that document, as well as some supplemental information in her PowerPoint this evening. So this time, I'd like to hand it over to Maricela.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, we do have for you the general fund five-year financial forecast. It is something that we are beginning to do annually, and so I hope that the information is helpful and that provides us some guidance as to how we see our city moving in the future in terms of its strategic goals, and particularly as we have our strategic planning meeting on Thursday, and hopefully some of the objectives that we look at will be geared towards building our general fund revenues. And just to give you an overview of what my presentation is going to look like tonight, we're going to discuss really briefly our operating financial policies that we currently have in place. We'll look at the five-year financial forecast, which will include some historical trends, what the economy has been doing, and then our revenue and expense projections. We'll also look at our future opportunities and some risks that we'll be facing, and then give you some final recommendations. And by no means are these final recommendations all encompassing. They're meant to generate some discussion as to particular items that we may also want to look at in terms of the general fund. Just really quickly, financial policies that we have is the cities will avoid. The city will avoid budgetary procedures that will balance the current expenditures at the expense of meeting future-year expenses, such as postponing expenditures, accruing future year's revenue, or rolling over short-term debt. That's just bad accounting procedure, and so we currently don't allow that. Provisions are going to be made for adequate maintenance of capital, plant, and equipment, and for their orderly replacement within our budgetary limits. The budget will provide for adequate funding of our retirement systems, and we currently do have three that we fund. The city's going to, will maintain budgetary control to help city staff adhere to the budget. Will be held accountable for ensuring that department expenditures stay within budgetary appropriations. All requests for city council action that have a financial impact shall be reviewed and approved by the city manager and the finance director before they will be included in the agenda. Requests for additional positions will only be considered during the city's annual budget process, except in those areas that the city manager deems as an emergency. New positions are classified, reclassified positions as approved as part of the budget will be reviewed to determine the appropriateness of the assigned classification or salary structure. The city will integrate performance measures where possible, including service level and productivity indicators in the city's published budget document. And we will provide a financial impact analysis of all policy initiatives, service changes, and new programs or projects. And so you usually see that in the financial impact section of your staff reports. We'll also seek state and federal funds that are available for capital projects, and then we also have budget amendments or transfers that are under $5,000 can be authorized by the city manager. Anything in excess of that has to be presented to the city council for approval. A few of our revenue policies that are currently in place. The city will endeavor to maintain a diversified and stable revenue system to shelter it from short-term fluctuation in any single revenue source. And when we go through our presentation, you'll see how volatile some of our revenue sources are. The city will estimate the annual revenues by an objective, conservative, and analytical process. You may have noticed that in some of my projections as well. There was a few I was extremely conservative on, and I'll highlight those. The city will strive to establish user charges and fees to recover the cost of providing the service, and annually recalculate the full cost of activities supported by user fees. And then non-recurring revenues will only be used to fund non-recurring expenditures. And so that takes us into our five-year financial forecast. And the basis for the projections that were included within the report that was provided to you is historical trends that we've seen for our revenues and expenditures over the past 10 years, some of what the economy is doing, both our U.S. state and local economy, and then specific sources of information, such as CalPERS, future development plans that are currently in the works, and our city strategic plan. A little bit of our general fund history. Looking at historical revenues, we'll go over our three major revenue sources. These are, make up about 66% of the city's revenues, and they are also the most volatile revenues. They will, they are highly dependent on what the economy is doing, particularly property tax. So we'll go over sales tax first. As most residents might know, it's imposed on most retail transactions. The current tax rate here in San Osos County is 7.625. With the passage of Proposition 57 in 2004, a quarter of that sales tax that we receive here locally was shifted to the state in order to pay for economic recovery bonds. That ends this current fiscal year. And within my first-year projection, you're going to notice a slight bump in the assumption that I made, and that's because of this triple flip, the way that they have, the way that their quarters fell during the allocation of these funds will make next year seem unusually high, because it will be one final true-up payment that we will receive. But that doesn't mean it will be ongoing, and you might have noticed that from my projections thereon now. The city's top 25 sales tax generators here at the city provide 78% of the city's sales tax revenue. And I'm sure you can all guess where the majority of those sales tax generators come from, and it is our crossroads shopping center. And as I mentioned below, our strategically placed crossroads shopping center continued to provide the city with significant sales tax revenue despite our failing economy. And so here are major generating categories of sales tax that we have here in the city. General retail is 38.4%. We have construction at 19.8. Food products, which includes our restaurants and our supermarkets, at 19.2. Transportation, which includes our gas stations, is 18.1. We have some business-to-business at 4.2, and then a few miscellaneous here and there of 0.2%. So this is what our historical sales tax looks like, and I want to highlight specifically the fiscal year '05-'06 in comparison to '06-'07. That is when our crossroads shopping center opened, and we had about an $850,000 bump in our sales tax revenue. So that has been what's been sustaining the city for quite some time, since '06-'07. You'll notice the steady increase from there, and even during the years of the recession, we continue to see increases. A slight bump in '12-'13 because of some misallocated tax payments that finally came back to the city, but it has been holding steady since then. Our property tax, which is imposed on all real property here at the city and on some personal property that you may own. The general tax rate is 1% of the assessed value, and the county assessor's office can add an annual inflator to that, which cannot exceed 2%. The property in the state of California is generally reassessed only upon change of ownership, and ours is assessed by the San Osos County Assessor's Office. So here's an overview of where our property tax has been. You'll notice a lot of peaks and a lot of valleys in that, given what the economy has been doing, the huge drop from '09-'10 to '10-'11, when the county assessor's office did all of the Proposition 8 assessments. And it has been steadily increasing from there as the economy has been recovering, but still not yet at the peak levels that we had in '06-'07, which was when Crossroads was continuing to build their homes. We also have our property tax in lieu of VLF, and this revenue accounts for the 1.35% of the VLF fees that we used to receive from the state, and we now receive property tax in lieu of that. We first began receiving this property tax source in 2004, and because it's classified as a property tax, it also fluctuates with the assessed values. And so you'll notice the trend there. '07-'08 was our peak for that revenue source and the steady decline during the recession. And then that has been increasing as well. And if you look at that trend line that's included in the graph for our property tax in lieu, and we go back to our property tax, it sort of mimics that same trend line. So we know that those two are going to be highly correlated. When one increases, the other will as well, and when one decreases, then we know there's going to be that same decrease in that revenue source. So that takes us to, just to look at our historical expenditures, and I'll just go over our two major expenditure categories, which is our salary and benefits, and then our contract with the sheriff's office. So basically, this is all of our personnel-related costs, which make up about 65% to 70% of our general fund expenditures. So historical salary and benefit expenditures over the past 10 years have fluctuated based on what the city has done in terms of its staffing levels. You'll notice the peak at '08-'09, which is when we really ramped up our staff in order to properly give service to all of our new residents in the crossroads area. And unfortunately, as the recession began to hit and our revenues began to fall, we needed to cut back on them as well. And so we did have a few layoffs that we did, particularly in building and planning, and some in streets, that led to the decrease in expenditures. We have been increasing expenditures since then, but it's not necessarily because we've added back a lot of staff. We have added back a few positions, but mainly it's been the increasing cost of benefits that has continued to cause that rise. And then our law enforcement contract with the sheriff's office. We see a similar pattern where in '10-'11, we saw a decrease. This is where we started seeing some of the vacancies come in, and to date, we currently still have two positions that are, that we are holding vacant. Hopefully, we'll be able to generate enough revenues to where we can bring those staffing levels back up to their original level. And so here's just the five-year average of our historical costs. You'll notice law enforcement, over a five-year average, has been about 40% of our expenditures, with staffing being an additional 31%. Operating costs have run at about 21% of our general fund expenditures. And then here's looking into my crystal ball, and with the help of the Internet and some great information that's out there, just a little look at what our economic outlook will look like here in the U.S. The economy's still fragile. It's demonstrated by recent events in the financial markets. You'll notice the huge decrease in the Dow and in the NASDAQ, and I've been getting emails telling me that my ICMA is down, so I know it's been fluctuating. But despite the fact that it is fragile, we still have increased consumer spending. We have increases in construction. We have unemployment that continues to decrease, and so there are some positive indicators out there in the U.S. economy. So some of the positive trends that have been noted are lower commodity prices, the collapse in the oil prices, and reductions in fracking. There's a rebounding housing market that has been experienced everywhere, including here in Riverbank. Existing home sales have been at a high since 2006. Europe is in recovery mode despite what happened in Greece. Europe is still continuing to increase its demand for U.S. products, and so we are seeing the benefit of that in terms of the products produced here in California. Some negative trends is there's a rising economic inequality, where the income gains are occurring amongst skilled workers versus the non-skilled workers. Mortgage credit, the new rules that have been established are limiting the ability for new borrowers to obtain credit, particularly those that may have a foreclosure or bankruptcy in their history. And the financial markets, which have been turning volatile for no reason. The state's economy, its job growth has outperformed the nation. It's the fifth fastest-growing state so far, and it added 461,000 new jobs. The quality of jobs is improving. There's been a growth in our professional, scientific, and technical services. Median home prices have grown by 82% since 2009, but it does also face some fiscal challenges. The state's currently relying on Proposition 30 in order to close its budget gap, and it's only a temporary tax increase. There's underfunded, unfunded pension obligations, which is facing local California cities everywhere, and so the state has not been immune to that. And then the infrastructure investments or lack thereof for our streets and roads and And then Riverbank's economy, some of our positive trends that we've been seeing, renewed development interests. We have the Diamond Bar West, which is in the final map preparation stage. Crossroads West, which is in discussion phases for the preparation of their specific plan and the future release for an RFP for the environmental review for that project. And we have continuing commercial construction with Pad C at Crossroads Shopping Center, and some of these exciting new shops and restaurants that will be coming in. And Pad G being their elevation review has been completed by the planning department, and there is a tenant in mind for them already. Unfortunately, we can't release that name quite yet, but it's exciting to see what's happening, and those will definitely generate some sales tax revenue for the city. Decreasing unemployment rates. Our August 2015 rate was 8.4%, and we've got a rebounding housing market, just like everywhere else, and new home construction. So KB Homes continues to build, and our increased home sales have led to increased property values. So you'll note for our single-family housing permit, we had our high over the past 10 years in 2005, when Crossroads was still building 281 building permits that were issued during that year. Currently, we, in this year, we have issued 42 to KB Homes and to Elmwood Estates, so it's exciting to see that ramp back up. A few negative trends. We've got the North County corridors potential to affect the Riverbank industrial complex, rising benefit costs, and rising contract costs. That takes us to our forecast. So this is an overview of our five-year financial forecast, so the current fiscal year 2015-16, which was presented to the city council for approval back on June 23rd. We did anticipate at that time that we would have a deficit, and we did discuss the fact that we would be funding some capital outlay, and that we would have the ED Bank loan final payment included in that, and that was leading towards the use of the reserve in order to fund those particular expenditures. Moving forward, unfortunately, we continue to see that our expenditures, just on the operating side, because I have segregated out the capital outlay, continue to outpace our incoming revenues. So for fiscal year 2016-17, we see a deficit projected of $16,000. For 2017-18, there's a projection for $37,000. And fiscal year 2018-19, we see a deficit of $72,000. Now, come 1920, we start to see a little bit of the light, and we look at a small surplus of $3,000 at that point in time. Capital outlay, on the other hand, we're looking at expenditures this current fiscal year of $34,000. Fiscal year 2016-17 of $183,000, and that includes work being done to the Seventh Street storm drain. And then 1718 through 1920 are HVAC upgrades that we have been delaying for quite some time now. So this was a three-year plan that Sue Fitzpatrick, the Director of Parks and Recreation, put together for the city manager and I last fiscal year. So far, we've been able to accomplish one of the items on her list, but there continues to remain a few others that we have not yet addressed. And so our reserve levels, unfortunately, due to those deficits that we're going to experience, as well as the capital outlay that we are projecting, we'll see a more-than-steady decline, going from a high of 8.3%, which is projected at the end of this current fiscal year, to a low of 3.6 come the end of 2019-20.
Just at that point, I would like to also comment that the capital outlay, that's just a tip of the iceberg in expenses that we could generate. And if you look at the CIP, the number of projects that would need general fund or grant funding, that number could go up exponentially if there was money to do projects. So these are some things that are, we believe, are critical to keep us operational. There probably will be more that will come as we deal with, you know, aging, aging systems. But this is a place to start, a place to identify some of the things that we actually have in a plan at the current time. But if you, again, just for those that are looking for, I would love to say that that would cover all of the capital outlay needs, but that is just, it is just the tip.
The reserves going below, even below 8% is dangerous, but when you start dipping below 5%, it could become catastrophic. So we're going to have to, while we're in the strategic planning, take a look at what is an acceptable level and how can we maintain that. Now, there's a couple of things which I don't believe you put in your calculations yet, is the AB 107, where we get the, another, basically 20% back in our property taxes. Not that it'd give us a true 20%, but that was, that's what the estimate would be. And I know we can't do projection on sales tax revenue on nonexistent buildings, but there may be some that could help us out in two or three years. But that's, that's nonexistent. But did you take a look at AB 107 and the implications?
No, that analysis hasn't come back from Cosmont Companies, who was preparing that for us, so we're, I was waiting for that information before I made that kind of assumption.
All right. So we may be still negative, but not quite as negative.
And that could be the case, yes. So based on the information we have now, this is the forecast that was prepared, and obviously annually, it will be updated with any new information that we have. And then quarterly, we will be updating our budget as well as we present the updates to you at the city council meeting. So just, this is just a graphical representation of the information that I just provided to you, just to look at a comparison of the revenues versus the expenditures. So we have the revenues that are highlighted in red and the expenditures in this gold color, and you'll notice that they far outpace the revenues that we're receiving until 2019-20, where they finally start to stabilize. The line represents our reserve level and where we are projecting that it will go. So our revenue forecast for the upcoming fiscal years. So we're looking at total revenues current fiscal year of $8.5 million. That would increase in the upcoming fiscal year to 8.8. So we are looking at a significant increase in the upcoming fiscal year with a high of 9.5 in fiscal year 2020. So I'll go over some of our major revenue sources and the trends that we've been seeing. Sales tax, the positive trends we've been seeing is the continued commercial growth within our shopping centers, and the IMAX theater at Galaxy, which will hopefully generate more visitors to our town, which will then lead to additional sales tax being generated as they go to some of our restaurants and local shops in order to do their shopping. Some of the negative trends is any growth in Internet sales, particularly during the holiday season, and neighboring commercial development in Modesto and Oakdale. Looking at our sales tax revenue, we'll look at an increase in fiscal year 2017 of 4%. As I mentioned, that includes that final true-up of the triple flip, so it's not something that's going to be ongoing. It will be a one-time increase, and so projecting thereon now, based on the estimates given to us by our sales tax auditors, we're looking at between a 1.8% to 2% increase. So that's what we have factored in. So we're looking at revenues of slightly over $3 million by the end of fiscal year 2020. Our property tax and property tax in lieu of VLF, I'll talk about these together, because as I mentioned, they are highly dependent on assessed values, and so as one increases, so will the other. Positive trends is the reversal of the Proposition 8 reductions by the county assessor's office. There's new housing construction and new commercial construction that's happening. And negative trends is that the supply of homes may exceed future demand, and borrowers with foreclosures and bankruptcies in their credit history might not-- And borrowers with foreclosures and bankruptcies in their credit history might not be able to obtain mortgages in order to purchase the homes that are out there. And so in terms of property tax, which is the first-line item on the graph, we're looking at an increase in the upcoming fiscal year of 5%. So I've kept that steady, which is highly conservative for this upcoming five years, just given that we don't know whether all of the development that we're anticipating will occur right away. We know there's a few that are are ready to build. But yet, it's all dependent on the developer, whether they will move forward or not. And so we can, we can hope that they move forward and we can assist them in any way that we can. But I've remained conservative with this particular revenue source because we don't want to depend too much on on somebody's word in order to do that. I would rather be able to look at what our past history has been over the the past couple of years, rather than move forward and project any significant increases. Same with our property tax in lieu of VLF. I've also remained extremely conservative with that particular funding source. Franchise fees, these are collected from solid waste, electric, gas, telephone, and cable services for the use of our right-of-way and our easements. These rise and fall depending on customer base. So during the recession, particularly with our tele, cable services, we saw a decrease in that because there was less customers, customers chose to to not use their cable services or to terminate their services. So that led to less revenue generated for the city in terms of franchise fees. There is a positive trend. We're looking at our solid waste franchise fees increasing because they are based on rates. We did approve, or the City Council did approve a rate increase last November. And that moves forward through fiscal year 2020 with annual increases known, based on the CPI. And so the August 2015 CPI was 2.6%. The contract states we will not raise it any more than 2.5. So we'll be looking at a 2.5% increase that we will be presenting to the City Council at an upcoming meeting in November. And so in terms of the revenues themselves, we're just looking at a steady 2% increase based on that CPI. So current revenues are being estimated at 537,500. And in fiscal year 2020, we'll be looking at revenues of $581,000. Building and planning revenue, which includes our building permit fees and our plan check fees and other planning-related items. We're looking at positive trends with the increase of issuance of solar permits. Over the past two and a half years, the the city issued 300 permits. Increased issuance of new housing construction permits and commercial construction. Some of the negative trends that we might be seeing is building and off-site improvement inspections are increasing, and the fees may not be sufficient to adequately cover our costs. We're highly, these are highly dependent on new construction. And solar permit issuance may slow down if tax rebates don't continue. And so in terms of our building and planning fees, we'll look at an initial bump in fiscal year 2017 of 5% as we have the closeout of KB Homes and the potential building in the Crossroads Commercial Shopping Center. And then a 2% increase that we're looking at there on out, based on past experience during the recession, just based on spending that are building permits that were pulled for some renovations. Operating transfers in is an interesting revenue source for the city in that it's really not a revenue source. It's a reimbursement of administrative charges to our, from our enterprise and other funds. So about 70% of this revenue source comes from those particular funds, from our water and sewer fund, our gas tax fund, local transportation funds. And they simply offset expenditures. Increases are due to salary and benefit costs. There's no other logical increase for them other than that. And just to give you this information, the salary, there's no salary increases that have been assumed within this projection. I know last year, when I presented the the forecast to you, we made some salary and benefit assumptions. And this year, we chose not to do that, or I chose not to do that. The reason being is I wanted to be able to see if we would be able to sustain current staffing levels and current expenditure levels moving forward, rather than projections on salaries and benefits, or salaries that have not yet been negotiated. So operating transfers in will increase based on the changes that have already, or the salary and benefit changes that have already been negotiated with our labor unions. We have a few other revenue sources that we also receive. And this is just a general overview of those sources. We've have the pilot payment that comes in from the Housing Authority on an annual basis. And this typically pays for the Housing Authority payment that we give back to the the county. So it it somewhat offsets itself. Real property transfer tax that the city receives. So that's based on homes that are selling, and we receive a portion of that tax. Other taxes that we have, such as the unitary tax that's assessed on businesses for the use of their, or for the purchase of their equipment, and some minor motor vehicle and lieu fee funds that still come to the city. Grants, you'll notice there was a significant decrease in fiscal year 2016 of 73.5%. That was due to the State Route 108 relinquishment grant that we received. And that offset the contract costs that we had for the preparation of that report. We no longer have that grant going forward. And so all we're reflecting is the COPS grant that we received from the state for $100,000. Police service fees, we're looking at an increase there as well, based on the number of citations that have been issued. And so we've made projections on that. And then we just have other miscellaneous revenue that that comes into the city. We are looking at a decrease of about 35% based on the number of capital projects that are, and staff savings that we're going to have on those capital projects that are federally And so that takes me to my expenditure forecast.
Got a quick question?
Yes.
Why is such the difference in the police service fees from 10.4% to 5%?
We're looking at this current fiscal year, the figures that we looked at were based on projections from the prior year for our vehicle citation fees that we received from the state. And based on those figures, we've been seeing an incremental increase in a lot of the prior year citations that were unpaid and that are now coming in. And so we projected a increase in revenues for that. Otherwise, from there on out, we don't project, once those are received, we we've received that, those revenues. And so we don't project those forward unless additional fines are are given to that person. But that really accounts for the majority of the increase in the current fiscal year, Expenditure forecast. So this is the overview that we have prepared. And so we're looking at total expenditures in the current fiscal year of $8.63 million. And expenditures in fiscal year 2020 of $9.53 million. So a significant increase in in expenditures as we move forward. And I'll go through and discuss the the particular expenditures. And so the one that you may notice right off the bat is the ED Bank Loan. It is only included in this current fiscal year as we have made final payment to the county already. And so moving forward, because we have no outstanding debt with regards to the ED Bank Loan, we have not included any cost for that. So expenditure projections for our salary and benefits. We're looking at an increase this current fiscal year of 11.7% over the prior fiscal year. Fiscal year 2017, we'll see an additional increase of 7.5%. That's based on the salary adjustments that have been negotiated with our current labor unions and that were included in the fiscal year 16 and 17 projections. So there was a one and a half percent increase that was negotiated. And so those have been factored in. Moving forward, there have been no salary adjustments that were included. These only benefit assumptions that are being made.
Does this include the, what is it, the Human Resource Manager that we have a position out for right now?
Yes, this does include that as a full-time position. Our benefits, looking at our pension benefits, there's rate increases that have been assumed based on historical trends and information that we receive from CalPERS. CalPERS sends us a report on an annual basis, which is based on the activity that happened two years prior. So currently, the the information that we have is based on information that, or activity that happened in 2013. And so that's what these assumptions are based on, assumptions for the three plans. We have three plans currently, the Tier One, which is our classic employees. We have Tier Two. There's only about three or four employees that we have within our Tier Two. And that Tier Two was established in order to begin reducing costs for the city back in April of 2012, might have even been 2011. So between April and June of that year, we had a couple of employees that fell into that Tier Two. And then moving forward, all of our new employees fall into our Tier Three or PEPRA Plan. Looking at increases for Tier One steadily of about 2% as well. Tier Two is looking at an increase of almost 3% in fiscal year 2017, as some of the unfunded liabilities start to build up for them, given the activity that the investments have been doing in CalPERS. So last year, they only had a 2.4% return on investment. Their estimates are 7.5%. So they fell quite short of of their goal. And so that translates into increases in our rates. The PEPRA Plan, we're also looking at increases there. What's different between the PEPRA Plan and the other two plans is that the employee will always pay half of the normal cost. With our other two plans, we currently have the employees who pay 7%. And then this reflects the city's portion of the of the employment cost. Unfunded, currently, the city has about $3.4 million in unfunded liabilities. And you will be seeing that in our upcoming audit, when that will be completed is in early January, and will be presented to the City Council for for your review. But we will be reflecting the fact that we have about $3.4 million in unfunded liabilities for past pension costs and assumption changes that CalPERS has made that have caused that that figure to increase. Health insurance, we currently contribute 100% of the premium and the deductible for the HSA plan for all full-time employees. We're looking at an annual cost inflator of 7%, given what our current contract with the San Joaquin Valley Investment Authority has been doing over the past two years. And that takes us to operating or non-staffing costs. And it includes general operating expenditures. It does include increased election costs in fiscal year 2017 and 2019 for district elections. And the five-year forecast reflects a 6.9% increase overall. So we're looking at current fiscal year of 1.53 million. And in fiscal year 2020, we'll have non-operating expenditures of 1.64. Our law enforcement contract, the current contract runs through June 30th of 2020. The projections do include proposed salary increases that the county has negotiated with those labor groups. I did contact the county, and they did provide me with that information. So I did include those projections. Currently, what they are not charging us for are administrative expenses associated with their payroll, their finance, their CSI, and their IT. And those are some, those are costs that the county has reserved the right within the contract to come back and recapture those if they are having budgetary issues. And so those, those may be coming in the future if the county faces some sort of budget shortfall. But overall, over the upcoming five fiscal years, in the current fiscal year, the contract is at 3.53. And by fiscal year 2020, we're looking at an increase of 3.84. Legal settlements, the settlement cost for Barham Construction versus the City of Riverbank have been included. The City Council did approve to submit a request to extend the timeframe over which we have to repay that settlement, which is of 622,857. If we are successful in that, we'll be looking at a 10-year period to repay that. We would have sufficient funds in the system development fee and our general liability fund, which we've been holding in reserve since the beginning of this case, in order to make payments for years one and two. And actually, probably about half of year three, but I I didn't include that in here. I went ahead and included the full payment out of the general fund. Future settlement costs that have not been included are for the Allen versus the City of Riverbank case, which could, might result in building permit fees or any other fees for reconstruction on that particular matter. But overall, you'll notice the increase in fiscal year 2018 of $87,000 moving forward, which is the annual cost of the 10-year repayment plan.
When will we know if the court has accepted it?
We are waiting for word from our our legal counsel on that. And I'm hoping to have at least a general update by tomorrow. But it really is at the court's leisure. I'd also like to point out on the Allen thing, the the wave building, we have paid out anything we've needed to pay out of significance. So any of the future costs there would just be revenue we would not necess, we wouldn't receive because we have agreed to do it for no, no building permit fees.
Just an overview of our revenues versus our expenditures and looking at the deficits that we will be facing in the upcoming fiscal years, given current revenue levels. We're looking at over the, between fiscal year 2017 and 2020, a structural deficit of about $122,000. But revenues coming in of $36,785, and expenditures going out of $36,907,000. It's a lot of money for a small city. Capital outlay, which is one of the items that I mentioned that I segregated out from that initial surplus deficit calculation, because we would be looking at funding that through the reserve, since they are one-time capital items. So for fiscal year, for the current fiscal year, the City Council did approve $34,000 in capital outlay. That was for the finance software upgrade that we're currently going through and that will be completed in early next calendar year. And then storm drain property purchase for the property located on Terminal in Reich that is currently going through escrow. In 2017, we see the significant increase of $183,000 for capital outlay. And that includes about $150,000 for the Seventh Street storm drain repair. And currently, that's just an initial estimate. Our city engineer is working on the best design for that and will give us their engineer's estimate at that time. This was the estimate that was provided to us by our initial consultant prior to design. So that number may fluctuate. Mind you, this wasn't the best alternative. They did give us an alternative cost for this particular repair. They did give us an alternative cost for this particular repair and it was of 300 and over, well over $300,000. But looking at the financial resources of the city, we chose to include the $150,000 estimate. We also have included costs for the HVAC at the museum, which is well over 30 years old, and the pool heater at the community center pool. In 2018 and through 2020, we're looking at HVAC upgrades to a few of our buildings, mainly the police department and our community center. So overall, the five-year capital outlay total is of $280,000. And as the city manager mentioned, this was just the tip of the iceberg. Doesn't include ADA transition plan costs that were presented to the City Council. Other items that may come up, we do have some old buildings, so.
Just even the basic things we've talked about, the community center upgrades, the pool upgrades, and things that are very difficult to fund and buildings are difficult to fund.
Looking at our reserve forecast. So in the current fiscal year, we're looking at a projected ending reserve of about 8.3% if we were to fund the capital items that were presented to you. And if we, with the deficits that have been anticipated in the upcoming fiscal years, we would be looking at a reserve of 3.6% at the end of fiscal year 2019, 20. Causes for the decline, as I mentioned, some strategic one-time expenditures in the current fiscal year, including the ED Bank Loan payment, the finance software, and the property purchase for the storm drain, future capital outlay due to delayed maintenance, and the structural deficits which require the use of the reserves in order to maintain current service levels. So looking forward to some of the opportunities and risks that we may have. Our opportunities, Crossroads West, it's the big one on the agenda. And I know staff has been dedicating a lot of time to that as well. I'm still looking probably at about five to six years out, but we are working busily on that now. Housing development, both on the east side and on the west side. Stimulation of private development in our downtown corridor. The expansion of the SOI or Sphere of Influence, Riverbank Industrial Complex and what can happen out there. And then redevelopment of the Cannery Site.
I would just add one more, and that is the potential for development along in the Patterson Road Corridor related to the investment made by Galaxy and the coming of IMAX. So I think that that is an area that really has some significant economic development potential, probably in the nearer term than others. And with the, with the potential revenue that actually could actually make a difference in our, in our general fund.
Some of the risks, this continued increases in our operational costs, continued changes to CalPERS and health insurance rates, future negotiations, which will begin in January of 2017 with our labor groups. The repayment of the Eleanor in Kentucky property purchased to the county, that kind of looms in the back of everybody's mind and pops up every couple of months. Unfunded sheriff deputy positions. We still currently have two vacant positions that we are not funding. Local redevelopment authority and any unknown liability associated with that. Another recession within the next five years. There's a lot of talk about 2018. Somehow that's the, that's the year everybody's predicting another recession. So we will definitely have to begin preparing for that if that is the case. Delayed maintenance on our building and our infrastructure. So that takes me to some final recommendations. And as I mentioned, these are not all encompassing, and the city manager may have a few that she would like to add. Continuing to work with private developers on current and future projects that are in the works. Reviewing current fee structures to ensure that the city is recapturing its cost. The planning department did do some of that earlier this year through a review of their planning fees, and we hope to do the same with our building-related fees. Review of all operational expenses to maximize cost savings. Quarterly monitoring of our revenue and expenditures. Continue prudent spending practices throughout all departments. Continue funding strategic one-time expenditures with one-time revenues. And we need to begin planning for those future recessions. And that brings me to the end of my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
I have a question about the, excuse me, the proposed funding that we were talking about at one time for our project at the wastewater treatment plant. Where is that in here?
This five-year projection is based only on the general funds. And so water and sewer, because, yes, those are different funds and don't require any subsidy from the general fund. So we have not included that in this particular forecast. But the water and sewer rate studies did prepare their own financial forecast for those funds. And so we were, so the rates would be covering the future debts or any debt service associated with that.
Just a couple of background and then some questions on threats. Last week, the Congressional Budget Office revised their projections for revenues based on income taxes and general taxes downwards by 1.2%, which is significant across the nation to where it's $300 billion per year. And that's over a five-year period. With Asian market just beginning to see the collapse. Last year, China had, in its personal, its personal debt or debt of the people was 150% of their GDP is now over 200%. And with that economy going down, that may really stifle what we saw as opportunities for growth. So that's not affecting Riverbank, but that affects the manufacturing and the stability of our nation's capital in, could in the near future. Europe is still sluggish, as are the developing nations. AB 107, though, could be a positive for us. If it's, first off, capturing 20% more, because we get a fair share of the property taxes, 20% more in property taxes could help out, depending on what our fair share is, what the county says our fair share is, and what they have to do in administrating. And that starts, I believe, January 1st. Internet sales, you mentioned as a threat. We still have to continue with our local legislators to push the state in revenue sharing on the internet. If, for example, I buy from Best Buy on the internet and I pick it up locally, the sales tax goes directly to the state. It doesn't go to the local authority. So we have to keep pushing that. So if you didn't know that, that is significant by local. Okay, one of the things we haven't looked at as a threat is that is employees being pirated from other areas. And in that, you could have two or three employees leaving, cashing in their sick pay and their vacation pay as they transition out. And that could be a significant hit into the budget, depending on where they are and what fee. Have we thought about some type of safety net to put aside retiring or projected retiring? Because that happens, and we have people approaching retirement age. And we have, and have we projected that?
No, not at this point in time.
Okay, not this year, but next year, when you're doing it, could you take a look at, over this five-year period, who might possibly retire? And who may steal someone that has a lot of talent to Tracy?
We're not allowing that.
We're not allowing that.
We're not allowing anybody to be stolen.
They can't be stolen, okay.
Locks on the door.
Please take a look at those in the retirement age and make sure that we are capturing our true threat coming on up. It's not a threat to them, but it is to the health of the city's budget. I think that would be prudent. I like your format a lot better. And I think you did a great job. I saw that you did a lot more on outside the area, which is very good. Worldwide could change it in a minute. And 2018, fiscal year 2018, 19, may be a slowdown, at least in construction, but they do show a rebound in 2022. So we could see another four-year recession. So we have to, this is preparing us and at least we won't be blindsided. My concern, though, is that, I know you're conservative, but if your conservative estimates are reality, going below 5% in our reserves is, to me, very dangerous. So some of those capital improvements may, I hate doing that, but may have to be reevaluated. I thought you did a fantastic job.
I likewise agree with the mayor that you've done a fantastic job, but I agree with him also that we may have to look hard at some of the capital outlay example. I know that the historical society museum could use the update, but I can't justify it at this time because I spent a lot of time over there. The buildings may be only used about eight hours a week. And so we need to look hard at things like that because maybe we could put aside to take the chance because the use of the building, unless it increases suddenly, just isn't there right now. And we may look at some things and find other situations like that where we can put it off a little longer because of certain factors like that.
Well, you could take a look at your hours of operation and start it at 04 to 08.
Good to me.
Okay. All right, Evelyn, do you have any comments, questions? Well, that's how we did it. We did it the same way. We've been doing this now for three years, and we're trying to take a look well in advance. Thank you. I know. All right, anybody else?
Mayor and council, as we go into the strategic planning session on Thursday, I've talked a little bit with this about you in our council briefings. But as I look at a very sobering, very sobering financial forecast, and I think about all the things that this council and this staff wants to accomplish, what our vision is and what our desire is to be an acceptable community, provide exceptional municipal services, is that the only way we can significantly move our revenues up to be able to even maintain the level of services and maintain the existing staff, which is reduced, just to maintain what we have, we need to move the revenue numbers up. And really, the only way to do that is to retain and attract business. And that, as we go into the next strategic planning session, is how we really build on what the council has already established as a goal area, what you have communicated at this dais and to me in wanting to be open for business. Work smartly and effectively with developers for smart growth, but for, but for growth so that we can actually increase those revenues. And so that is really just, what really hit me very hard by this is that, just in order to maintain. And there's some things that we talk about as economic development that aren't necessarily going to move the revenue significantly forward. There are good things, but looking for those opportunities that have the most bang for the buck. And so I think when Maricela highlighted crossroads and the $850,000 that that increased the city's revenues in one year, that it is, it is a major development that we need. It is some really significant additions. We're going to have to look at it in some bigger pieces. So that is something that I just wanted to offer to you as one of the things that I think is important for all of us to remember as we go into Thursday. I also am looking at law enforcement costs and staff costs, the general operation. We can't cut anymore and make a significant difference in our operations. We're going to have to either reorganize how we are, how we're structured and/or increase our revenue significantly. So that's sort of my takeaway. And what I'd offer to you to ponder, I would certainly welcome your thoughts on that tonight or on Thursday or at any time.
Any other comments? All right, again, well done, Maricela.
I too like to congratulate Maricela and thank her for her significant amount of work on this project. Thank you.
She did that without that software upgrade.
Yes, she did. He's talented.
I thought you'd see an X-Drive report.
Yeah, exactly.
Still might not look good, but.
All right, I hereby adjourned a special city council meeting. Thank you all. Thank you, staff.